Ms. Garaybo to flag the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Pilger?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Musa Abirson?
Here.
Bessler?
Here.
We always start with our favorite part of our board meeting, District 207's Best Award. We have still our District 207's Best for Academic Achievement from Maine East that we didn't have at our last meeting, and then we're going to move on to the Best for Community Service for all three schools. So, Mike, do you want to start?
Absolutely. I am very pleased to introduce and ask Rebecca Hurwitz to come over here by me, please. So Rebecca has consistently been an academic powerhouse at Maine East. She has the highest GPA in this year's senior class. If you take a look at her transcript, she's taken very nearly everything, advanced placement that one can take at Maine Township. Additionally, she's in concert choir. She has done Project Lead the Way for actually four years, three years, with intro engineering, she did the civil engineering and architecture, the computer integrated manufacturing, and this year is doing an engineering and design capstone project. She's a member of the Gifted Lyceum. She's had three years of accelerated Spanish, and on the extracurricular side, she's been a member of the speech team, reading club, National Honor Society, Students Organizing Against Racism, SOAR, Skills USA. She's a coach tutor, and she is a national merit semifinalist. Outside the walls of East, Rebecca's been able to develop her choral and leadership skills in Hazemir, which is an international Jewish teen choir. She's been a teacher's aide at Beth Minn Congregation in Evanston, and she's volunteered several summers at Starbase Indiana in Indianapolis, which is a Department of Defense Youth Program, where she's assisted children in programming spike robots, worked with PTC Creo, which is a 3D CAD application, and assisted in the use of Adobe Illustrator and Scratch computer programs. Last year, Rebecca was a pretty strong competitor at Skills USA in architectural drafting competition, and according to her instructors Tom Kaiser and Andy Gonzalez, showed a very high level of mastery using Fusion 360, Revit, which is a 3D architectural software, and Inventor 3D modeling and computer aided manufacturing software tools, which by the way are architectural firms have used in the design of our buildings and campuses. All professional level softwares, and again, just really not hidden out of the park in terms of her diligence and always striving for perfection and always positive and willing to help others. What I really want to focus on is her work and research over the last two or three years, which has been amazing. Some of it I understand and some of it what I don't. So, over the last two or three years, she worked at the University of Michigan's Math and Science Scholars Program on catalysis, solar energy, and green chemical synthesis. That was in June of 2020. She worked at the AI Scholars through Stanford University, artificial intelligence scholars, high school intensive experience in artificial intelligence, advanced topics in machine learning, which is a project-based intensive AI plus healthcare course. She attended the Summer Engineering Institute through the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. She was participated in a science research program here in District 207, do research on how different carbon sources and compost affect growth of standard Wisconsin fast plants and green beans. And this last summer was accepted into the Garcia Research Scholar Program for high school students through Stony Brook University, where this is the part that I'm going to read to you, and I don't clearly have an understanding. She worked on in silico research on the interactions of polylactic acid with the SARS-CoV-2 spike lycoprotein under varying temperatures, and in silico research on docking of baloxavir or boxal and the SARS-CoV-2 spike proteins receptor by globulin. Oh, I got that right. One of three high school students accepted through a very competitive process to participate in that research. Lots of amazing things that many staff members said about her, but I'm going to choose to read a bit of what Mr. Greg Roos, who is Lyceum Program Director and has worked very closely with Rebecca over the last three and a half years, said Rebecca has a quiet intensity about her freshman year in our AP World History class. She was extraordinarily observant, taking everything and processing it and adding it to her understanding. She was driven to make connections and understand the nuances of whatever it is we were studying. She wasn't discouraged by setbacks, but took them as opportunities for growth to identify areas of opportunity and dive in to express them. At the end of freshman year, she was an academic powerhouse and carried that through AP exam. I've been fortunate enough to watch Rebecca grow over the last four years, working with her in Maine East Lyceum Program. Although she still has that same intensity and intellectual curiosity, she now also uses it to pursue her passions and to bring others into the work she's doing. Junior year, she spearheaded a group looking to brain composting a school and district. I was so impressed by the way she helped set her classmates up for success and brought out the best in each of them. I'd also add John Paliza was her PE teacher last year, and John commented, as we were living virtually, I think Rebecca is, from all accounts, a student who really did extraordinarily well in a virtual environment, and yet, one would think, well, she did school virtually. She's the student that pops up every time I turn around, there's a club, there's an organization, something going on, Rebecca is there. John was just so very, very grateful to have had her in class because she really helped facilitate a learning community that would not have been nearly as successful without her in terms of that combination of great intellect, really high touch, I think, empathy, relational skills with her peers, and just being able to work through all the technology things that we worked through last year. So, again, we are just such a much better school for everything that you have done, and clearly, I think, as the expression goes, the world is your oyster as you look to the future, so congratulations Rebecca. Would like to introduce who's here with you tonight?
Yes, my parents are here, and then also my twin sister Aviva and Mr. Reese, who you've already mentioned.
Very good. And what's on the plan to do for next year?
I'm applying to 10 different colleges in chemical engineering, including University of Chicago and Northwestern University.
Cool. All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on to District 207's Best for Community Service. Why don't we start with Maine South, Ben?
Sure. This month, we have our President of the Key Club, Ella Zimmerman. Ella, if you want to come right over here. When I got a chance to sit down and talk to Ella, one of the things that came out loud and clear was just her dedication to service that has been happening since middle school. And I was asking her, you know, what drives that work, or what is it that really excites you about working with all these organizations? And she said she just really likes to help others out and connect with those in the community, and she's loved doing it ever since. She's got great parents, that she mentioned, you know, them being awesome role models, and I think once you get a little bit of a better taste of some of the things that she's done, you'll see that it's really extraordinary. She's also a member of our varsity soccer team and plays with a club team, so she's a really, really busy student. She's been a four-year member of Key Club, and like I said, she's the president this year, where she focuses on essentially everything community service going on at Maine South, including making crafts for the Sheridan Senior Center, Feed My Starving Children, making cards for hospitalized kids, paracord bracelets for veterans, Uncle Pete's events where lunches are packed for homeless shelters, and postcards to freshmen, which we started doing recently, which has been a big hit. Outside of school, she's a leadership counselor at Camp Invention, which is a STEM camp for students where they can learn about innovation, and she leads the kindergarten group. So the camp promoted things like her critical thinking and innovation with young students, and last year she was also participated through Mary's Seed of Wisdom and Making Blankets, volunteering at Bernie's Book Bank, and was the assistant CCD teacher at St. Paul of the Cross. I do not know how you find the time with everything you're doing. She's also a member at school of our student tutoring program, where she does science and math tutoring for her peers, and a member of Hawk Pride, where she's a Hawk Pride leader and works with the freshmen in our advisory program. She's also in NHS Engineering Club and the Secretary of Science National Honor Society. So Megan Wood, Ella's counselor, says, "I have been Ella's counselor at Maine South since August of 2019 and have been impressed by her unwavering work ethic, her genuine love for higher level learning, and her unparalleled motivation. Throughout her entire high school career, Ella has completely immersed herself, and her school community has taken advantage of endless educational, social, and extracurricular opportunities. Her happy-go-lucky attitude combined with her goal-oriented nature make her an absolute joy to work with. While she excels academically, her intelligence is matched by her strong leadership skills and passion for reading and research. Her courses have increased with rigor each year, and I admire her willingness to experiment with a variety of our elective classes. Doing so, Ella has been able to create challenging yet feasible career goals for herself, which have been apparent in her course selection. Aside from excelling in the many academic courses, Ella has exhibited exceptional leadership skills in her involvement outside of the classroom. Over the last four years, she has participated in the Hawk Pride Program, the PE Leadership Program, where she's been recognized as a true leader and served as a mentor for younger students. Additionally, she was selected as a Key Club President, where she has devoted countless hours to philanthropy and volunteer work. Ella is a member of our varsity girls soccer team and a multitude of other school-sponsored clubs and activities, which all capitalize on her competitive nature and plethora of passions. Ella's ability to juggle a wide array of roles and responsibilities is a testament to the well-rounded individual she truly is." Alex Dethakis, Ella's Accelerated English I and Literature of Chicago teacher, says, "While I may not be unaware of all that Ella does for the community at large, I've been lucky enough to see her contribution to the classroom committee in both my English I accelerated classes as a freshman and my Literature of Chicago class this year. Ella not only fully engages in the curriculum, but she works as a leader in group work to help her classmates understand the material. Furthermore, she models positive classroom behaviors, ensures her ideas with the class as a whole during discussion, elevating the classroom discourse, and improving student learning." Laura Kirchner, Ella's English II accelerated teacher, says, "Ella's been a shining light in all of her years at Maine South. Being witness to her compassionate personality, her inclusion of others in creative and critical thinking throughout her sophomore year in English class, I'm not surprised that she is a recipient for this award. Thank you for your altruism and for the gifts that you will surely bestow on humanity in the future, Ella." So Ella, it's really remarkable with all of the things that you have going on in school and the success you've had there academically, that you devote so much time to others in the community, and it means a lot that you would do that for everybody here at the board meeting and then our entire school district. So thank you so much for everything you do. You're going to do awesome things moving forward. Why don't you tell us who's with you here tonight, and then what are your career goals and things that you're doing after high school?
Both my parents, my mom and my dad are here, and next year I plan to apply to colleges, and my major is biomedical engineering.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on to District 207's Best for Community Service at Maine West.
I'm really thrilled to present Dolph Vincent Hennis tonight. Dolph, can you come on up? So I have known Dolph since he was a sophomore on the Principal's Leadership Team, and we've had so many meaningful conversations. He is insightful, self-defacing, and humbly devoted to others. And one of the wonderful things I know about Dolph is that he does not seem to understand how unusual he is. He told me about signing up for an opportunity for cleanup give back to do some environmental cleanup through the National Honor Society, and when he signed up, he thought there would be a flood of volunteers and that he wouldn't get to go, he wouldn't make the list, but when he showed up, he was confused. He was one of only a few and probably the only one who became as deeply committed as Dolph does. He talked about being sidelined during COVID and wanting to push back against COVID shutdowns, so he pulled in more students. He wants more people to know what kids have to offer, that his generation is hopeful and empowered. He started a Student Department for Community Development at school to make sure that students have opportunities to do service at any time. Through a whole network of local service organizations, he was enlisted to be community partners, and he turned that project into an internship in the Career Services Department with Kayla Hansen, whose vision and energy are a perfect fit for Dolph. And through Kayla, he's connected with a job between his freshman and sophomore years, and that's where he said he learned that you have to be bold, you can't hold yourself back, you have to commit to learning and listening and then make the decision to contribute what you can and just go. So he knows these will be lasting lessons, and he's already employed them to great effect in his quest to make service an everyday part of student life at Maine West. So here are some of the things that are part of everyday life for Dolph at Maine West and in our Displanes community. There's cleanup give back, Speak Displanes, where he's also an intern, the Displanes Public Library, the Niles Public Library, the Center of Concern, Hana and Hanul, which are local nonprofits serving the Asian community, the Self-Help Closet and Food Pantry, Key Club, Science NHS, of which he is the president, the Principal's Leadership Team, of which he's on the Exec Committee, National Honor Society, Model UN, in which he's the second council, Warrior Strings, Pi Sigma Phi, Spanish NHS, Nu Alpha Theta, Triumph, in which he is an officer, and to fill up all of that extra time he has, he tutors violin in the community as well. He also has a terrific singing voice, which didn't really come up, but I'm going to put it out there.
We'll make him sing as the answer.
As you can imagine, an entire network of devoted Dolph fans, some of whom are here, were delighted at the chance to share their imagination. I think every staff member in the building knows Dolph. Mr. Sumida said, "Dolph is a tireless leader. Few students work this hard to build the bridge between Maine West and the community we serve. I personally watched Dolph bulldoze through layer upon layer of corporate bureaucracy to make the connection between our club and a major employer here in Displanes, and it has made a difference to students who became involved with Science NHS. His energy, enthusiasm, willingness to try new ideas, and quirky yet positive personality all aid his quest to make Maine West and Displanes better places to grow as people." Ms. Garrity Rodinos, our Key Club sponsor, shared this. "I think Dolph's greatest accomplishment for community service is the diverse group of people he recruits to volunteer. He inspires an eclectic group of contrasting personalities to improve our community. Helping peers see the beauty in service to others is a form of community service itself." Ms. Lannan called Dolph "a live wire, a bundle of positive energy and an asset to every group with which he is associated. Whether he was in costume as a revolutionary in my history class or enlivening a Zoom class with his witticisms and wacky backgrounds, he brought joy and commitment to every lesson. Dolph is a wonderful role model for younger students, showing them that even in the toughest of times, a young person can make a difference with enough passion and purpose." Ms. Anderson captured Dolph's essence pretty well, when she described his gifts of recruitment. "A student was telling me how Dolph talked several students into making presentations to classes for Model UN, and how they were nervous, but not Dolph because he's Dolph. I knew exactly what he meant, but I am not sure that I can put it into words, so I will just say he is an amazing person." Ms. Weaver relayed a comparison that I didn't really know how to present, but I can't leave it out, so here goes. "Dolph is one of the most unique students I have ever had. His drive for all things academic can only be matched by his drive for all things life. He is always thinking of his next move, always contemplating how he can better himself and the world around him, always investigating the path ahead. He is thoughtful and caring, demonstrating his generosity to those around him through the time he puts into the tasks at hand or the extra miles he goes to to make sure a job is done right. He has his hands in wherever they fit, at school, in the community, and in his everyday life. I overheard a student commenting recently, 'Dolph is like Jesus. He's everywhere in our lives. There aren't many students more involved than Dolph, and he never takes a step back. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award.'" And then finally, Ms. Gustafson shared something that resonated so strongly with something Dolph said that I had to share. "My favorite moment with Dolph this semester took place a few weeks ago while presenting original poems to the class. Dolph wrote his poem in Seguano and English and shared it with the class in both languages. Though the ability to write poetry in multiple languages is certainly impressive, that didn't make this moment stick with me. As he described snapshots of his life and poetry, his affection and tenderness for that place that used to be and will always be home came alive. The pride he has for that place and all its complexity was striking and will stay with me for a long time. I'm grateful that the Maine West community gets to call him ours right now." And I ended with Ms. Gustafson's comment because I know how important his roots are to Dolph. They are the source and the sustenance of all he does. "Please emphasize," he implored me, "this isn't really me. This is my parents, my grandparents. My determination, that's from them. My creativity, that's from them. My spirituality, it's from them. Service comes from faith." He spoke about the importance of belonging in a collectivist community like his home country, the Philippines. He talked about his early school life, leading committees, singing, gathering his friends to make a contribution to their school. From an early age, all Dolph did was learn the lesson he has been teaching us ever since, that kings are really servants, and that servants with open and giving hearts are truly kings. On behalf of Maine West High School, I gratefully present Dolph Vincent Hennis, 207's Best for
Dolph, can you please introduce who's here with you tonight?
Thank you so much. Congratulations. After you shake some hands. So yeah, my parents are here, both of them. And sorry, I'd like something about college here. So next year, I, well, this year, this year I'm actually just looking through some of colleges. I have some in mind, but as of like majors and all that stuff, with my interests like, you know, still scattered, I'm just going to go undecided for the first couple of years because, you know, I want to make sure that you get it right.
All right. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, now District 207's Best for Community Service for Maine East.
All right. I am very pleased to introduce to you Pallavi Raju. Come up. Probably best known to nearly everybody at Maine East simply as Pallavi. So again, she's been a really very well-accomplished scholar in terms of what she's been doing academically. Again, a lot of AP and accelerated. She's also been studying Spanish language all four years. She started in junior high, middle school. She's been a leader in East's broadcasting program, having been in classes for three or four years, and she's been super active in WMTH Radio and TV, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a moment. She's also a PE leader, she's Schuler Scholar, and she's fluent in Punjabi and Hindi. And the reason that we landed on Pallavi for this is particularly in the last year, really a lot of the volunteer kind of opportunities and the things that we saw were centered around Maine East and the community. And truly Pallavi, last year as a junior, was a great collaborator with some of the senior leaders that were there, and really established some things that she's now leading in a very impressive style as a senior at Maine East. So among these various club and organization affiliations, she is a member of the Maine East Student Council. She's been involved all four years. She's currently the president of Student Council. Over her time, she's assisted with blood drives, homecoming week, and assemblies, has done a lot of work there. She was last year VP of Marketing and Public Relations, doing a lot of publicity, creating posters, advertising them on social media, has done a lot of video work to promote things as well, and introduced and managed the annual fall activity raffle. She is a member and co-president of Maine East Cares, our school-wide philanthropy, where she in the past has volunteered to organize and run the Father's Day 5K, and has organized various fundraisers and moneymakers for charity over the years. She is a member of the National Honor Society. She is founder and president of the Mental Health Awareness Club, again, where she really saw tremendous need, and again, you know, when Pallavi sees a need, she kind of identifies it, names it, and starts to work right now to do something to address it. She is an ARCODE leader and a member of the Student Advisory Panel, and she's a member of the Maine East Rotary Interact Club as an officer, where she was coordinator at the Adult Down Syndrome 5K volunteer, and again, did a lot of fundraising and service events for the school year. She's a CALSA Aid volunteer, which CALSA Aid is a UK-based international nonprofit humanitarian organization that provides support to victims of natural and man-made disasters around the world. As a member of WMTH Radio and TV, she has been awarded numerous times. She was nominated for an award for the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences 2020. She got a nomination by the Midwest Media Educators Association, and won second place by that same organization for news production in 2021. She's been active in RV show, she's been a member of the tech crew, specifically doing some costume design creation. She's a bookstore volunteer, and somewhere along the way, she was a member of the Badminton Team as well. In the comments shared by multiple staff members, there are really some clear common themes that emerged, and that is Pallavi is caring, she's empathic, she's self-aware, she's inquisitive, she's action-oriented, hardworking, and she is a social justice advocate. As one teacher put it, Pallavi consistently walks the talk and leads by example. Again, there were many, many people who had amazing things to say. I'm going to pick a couple here. Carly Vance is the Program Director for the Schuler Scholar Program and has worked very closely with Pallavi over the past three and a half years. Said, these are some notes that staff put their heads together and shared. "Pallavi is a dedicated scholar and leader who often puts the needs of her peers above those of her own. While Pallavi's involvement clearly display her leadership, it is the behind-the-scenes work to advocate for her peers that really makes Pallavi stand out. She's a lifelong learner and advocate for social justice and mental health, a person who is determined to face the challenges of the world head-on and be a part of the solution. She recognized that mental health was an issue that faced her community during the pandemic, created a club at Maine East to address this issue. She's working to practice self-care and compassion within herself and within her community. She's serving her community while also bettering herself. And of course Pallavi is an excellent student, taking on a very rigorous course load and excelling. She puts in hard work, is mature and reflective, and forms strong relationships with her teachers and other adults in her network." I'd also share, Chris Peters, one of our social science teachers, and he's an ARCODE co-sponsor, and particularly over the last few months, as we've really been working in ARCODE to define some school-wide sort of norms, things like that, we created a Student Advisory Group, and Pallavi's been very active in a lot of those meetings. And I have to say, when we've had meetings that have had parents present, staff members representing the entire range of the building of our employees, and a number of students, I think consistently Pallavi is the individual in my mind who is sometimes bringing up the fact that maybe is a little bit hard to wrestle with some, and doing it in a way which is thoughtful and kind yet critical, and ultimately helping us be a better school as we work through. She's incredibly articulate and poised in that work as she does that. I would say I just end with a little quote by Eric Kobel, who was an English teacher and co-sponsor of SOAR. He just summed it up. He said, "Pallavi's a go-getter in every sense of the word, and everything she does is an attempt to make our school, community, and the world a better place. She's thoughtful, inquisitive, and a true learner in every sense of the word. While she does so much for the school, her initiation of the Mental Health Awareness Club is a prime example of how she sees a need and does everything in her power to try to help others. She's just an exceptional person who has done and continues to do things to make our school the best place it can be. And Pallavi, I thank you, I congratulate you, and wish you all the best in the future." Who's here with you tonight?
My parents are here, my mom and my dad.
And what are your plans next year?
Next year, hopefully I'll be in Claremont McKenna, majoring in PPE, which is Politics, Philosophy, and Economics, and maybe Psychology.
Okay. Thank you.
Normally we let the students and your families leave now, but I would ask you to stay for just the very next agenda item, and then we'll let you step out the hallway and take pictures and depart. But our next agenda item includes honoring our principals, so if you can stay for that.
Yeah, let's go. This is Priscilla Shum. I collected some vignettes from various people around the district, and I started to compile with them, but then I was having a scroll, so what I'm going to do is condense very quickly for the principals, and just say the last two years have been bananas, and that is putting it mildly. And we have lived through an event that most of us will never see again, none of us have ever seen before, and we've continued to do school here in this district at a very, very high level against very, very challenging conditions. On any given day when decisions had to be made and there were no right decisions to be made, these three individuals were at the forefront of continuing to run our schools and run them as well as any schools in America could be run, and that's not an overstatement. Last year, there were days during the year when we were the only high school open in the North Cook area. In fact, there were days- In fact, there were days we were the only school open in North Cove area. And it's because of the leadership of these three principals, we've gotten off to a really good start this year and we're solving new problems. Tents on football fields for homecoming and things like that that just are totally unprecedented. I don't think the public fully, fully understands. In the business of schools, there are plenty of tough jobs. Teachers have tremendously difficult jobs and I have the utmost respect for them. I've done that job. Our assistant superintendents have really tough jobs and I have the utmost respect for them. I've done that job. Coaches have tough jobs and I have the utmost respect for them. I've done that job. But one job that I've done is the hardest job of all, and that is high school principal. And I've done that job. There is not a job in education that is a combination of mental and physical complexity on a day-to-day basis, month after month, week after week, year after year, that comes anywhere close to challenging, especially in a large, complex, comprehensive high school like we have here in District 207. So I just want to take a moment, we have some things there for the, some goodies for the principals, but I want to take a moment since we have our Students of the Month to recognize our three incredible principals. Folks, these are not just anybody's principals. These three principals, and this is again, not an overstatement, these are three of the best principals in America, right here in our district, leading three of the best schools in America. So why don't we take a minute to recognize Dr. McMahon, Dr. Collins, and Dr. Presser for the wonderful. I think I did that in three minutes too. Okay, so with that, guys, we'll go get pictures. And students, tremendous night, but give your principals good paneling back tonight too. And thank you all so much. It's always just such an honor to hear the incredible kids that we get to see every, every month here. It literally is the best part, but we need to acknowledge the good work that principals do. So thank you guys all very, very much.
And our future is so bright with you students. And I feel very secure that anything unknown or unprecedented that happens again, you will be okay because you are our leaders of the future. So thank you, congratulations. And then I have some comments for the principals when we return too, but then move on.
And so next thing for the superintendent, we have a recognition here. District 207 has an Illinois Association of School Board Master Board Member sitting recognized tonight, one, Mr. Jen Lee. And you are very nice, all of you, as we can. That should look good on you.
That was a surprise.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, you were expecting it. Congratulations to you Jen, that's for all of the service recognition and the addition trainings that you've done. So you've achieved master board steps. That is the pride of us, as the board member in Illinois can achieve. Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to go to public comments though.
You have a comment?
I did not turn my hand.
Are you the only one? Is anyone else?
I didn't know the process.
Okay, good, no problem. I just want to remind, remind anybody who's interested in public comment that it's limited to three minutes. We are all about respect and civility, not only at District 207, but here at the district board level. And we expect that from our public comments. Not only the three minutes, but this is not a question-and-answer period. This is really for your public comment. But there's not going to be a Q and A or a response from the board or the administration. But if you are interested in follow-up from the administration, let Brett, who's a cameraman, when he comes back in, let him know that.
I'm sorry, we're interested in what?
Response from the administration?
Oh, got it.
Or want to have an interaction, let Brett, who kind of operates our camera, you can let him know that. But you can step forward and.
Come on.
Again, we'll just time you and let you know.
Sure, thanks. Hi, I'm Kristen Olson, I live in Park Ridge and I have an eighth grader who will be coming into the D207 schools next year. I want to thank you for your service because I think it's an understatement to say it was a heck of a year for everybody. But in preparation for her transition to school, I've been reading through past board meetings and notes and saw some comments from parents that they were concerned about critical race theory and other things being taught in school. I just wanted to come forward with my support for it. One of the parents said she thought schools should just do reading, writing, and arithmetic. And I said, I know our high schoolers have such a packed schedule. I wanted to see what employers want. Do we need to make room for this in school? And it's a resounding yes. Mercer, McKinsey, they're saying that 95% of companies really value, they call it DEI, Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity. So our students, we can't prepare them for life outside of school without this. We can't prepare them for college and university life. So thank you, this is a controversial subject. I'm sure it's been very complicated, but I appreciate you taking this on for the benefit of our students and communities. Thank you for your comment.
I'm Jessie Magg and I am an alumni of Main West and I have a kid there. And I just want to thank you all for taking a stand on safety for our students with having access to vaccines on site when it got vaccinated at Main East and masks mandated. That definitely makes us all feel more safe sending them to school. But I feel like you went above and beyond because you also put out poster, or the signs at all of the schools, taking a stand for, against racism and for inclusion of all people. And this has really touched me deeply this year because my own kid came out to this school this year with the name change and pronoun changes. And we felt, we knew that you were going to be safe in the community because of the messaging that you all put out again and again in a variety of ways, saying that you're going to stand up for all people, regardless of race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, ability. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart that you continue to take this stand and that you continue to have staff that push for the best in all of it. So thank you very much.
I know you don't want to hear that. Thank you. Any other public comments? Any updates for the board members?
I have one. I just wanted to thank the principals that I realize now, but they did give me some input on what was happening with the green teams across the district. And it's pretty exciting. And I just wanted to thank them for giving us that information.
And we're going to, once they're all back, I'm going to say a couple words.
And I, yeah, and I do, I just did want to encourage, I don't know if you might want to do this or Ken at some point, you know, some of the green teams might want to come in and make a short presentation to us.
I think we want, I just wrote that down.
Since it's a policy that we, you know, that we implemented as a board.
No, we need a, we need a memo.
Right, and we don't use to always, you know, they can come directly to us. Even if it's in writing or something, they might be, they may be interested in hearing what you're doing.
Well, and Carla, we'll remember all of you.
Thank you.
So I was able to listen in from the School Based Health Center meeting. And I appreciate your running for it and the success that we have got for the district. And it obviously really serves all the students in our community in a really compassionate way. I did ask them at the end of the meeting if they, any of them had a wish list to solve as a board member, that maybe we should ask them and give them that opportunity. Brenda said that they could use some extra in nursing help. That would be Brenda Keely, that man's a school nurse. And she also recommended a PhD machine for students. And then also we need to be aware that under insurance students sometimes need funds to pay for services. And that's especially, I think, a need that has grown even larger due to COVID because many families and parents have lost their job.
Yes, the School Based Health Center is a model for school-based health centers in the country. Their work in collaboration with Eric, who's a dental hospital, Eric Aurora, who's a dental hospital, is outstanding. And I'm sure some of that feedback will be taken back to them, but we appreciate you serving on that. And we just have a board member that goes to that and it's very important. So thank you for that, for that, next of all board. Any other board member updates?
I did want to say thank you to all of the principals also for amazing homecoming celebrations. I know that each school community really, really appreciated it. They went so well and students had a really, really nice time. And I know students were very excited that they missed it last year. So thank you principals, I know it was a crazy, crazy weekend for all of you when you had your homecomings, we appreciate it.
Well, that is a nice segue back to the principals. So thank you, Ashley. So I just wanted to comment, and I didn't want to do it while you were in the room, but as board president and a member of this board for seven years, I want to personally thank you and echo everything Ken said. I have seen day-to-day what you have gone through, email by email, situation by situation. And not only do you have the depth of character and excellence that we demand of your students, but you are role models and leaders that will have impacted not only all those students of this district for the rest of their lives, but all of us. You are outstanding and we are eternally grateful, thank you.
And you're talented.
They're talented.
As we know Ben.
Yes, we'll, we'll have a musical show later, but I want to compare. If anybody else can join in, but I just, we just thank you.
I was very quickly followed to echo. I was impressed throughout my board members too is that the principal really be acting, responding right away quickly to all the parents, concerned parents, who's sending an email regarding complaints, issues, and anything. But you guys are right there then and then answer as much as Ken. And I'm deeply pleased when I see that as, as. So again, thank you so very much for your excellent services and we're proud of you being served as a principal.
Now, you can take a nap.
This is Mike's last principal's one?
This is Mike's last principal's one, then I just want to say.
It is.
Can't imagine, I mean, literally cannot imagine doing this without him. So thanks, Mike.
Yes, thank you. Stick around an extra couple years, I asked him to admit to that if he ever reevaluated Ken. And he smiled and said, no, 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 but he's always positive. You're all always positive with a smile, even on our toughest days. Your toughest days, so thank you. Okay, we're going to committee updates now, Education Committee.
Oh, and of course, ladies and gentlemen, okay. The Education Committee held their meeting on September 21st at 8:36 a.m. Present were myself and Sheila Usabamisit. There were no public comments. The meeting really was a School Links demonstration. The Assistant Superintendent for Career Innovation, Sean Messmer, demonstrated the School Links platform, which was board-approved in August and rollout just occurred October 1st. Information on present and past students are uploaded into the platform and appear on staff and student dashboards. Parents can also do all things students do on the platform. It was shared with us and I believe the board has access to this as well. And I encourage board members and parents, you know, the students are going to be on it, to go on and tinker around in there. I did, it was very interesting and I think it's a really powerful platform. And if it rolls out the way we expect it to, it's going to be really helpful. They have things such as Find Your Path activity, which provides a student personality profile based on answers to the Myers-Briggs type questions. They suggest careers to explore based on that. They have something called a Would You Rather activity, which also suggests career pathways based on student preferences to working conditions. They help set academic and career goals. It explores career profiles within career clusters, gives general overviews about job growth and salary. It allows students to explore any field of interest and related opportunities, even ones that might not be the top ones that would come up based on their answers to questions. It allows them to explore, which we thought was important, for them to have that flexibility. And they can also explore internships and career experiences. Allows them to choose favorite post-secondary institutions and notifies the student when those institutions are visiting the school, which is really great. It helps them complete the college application and manages all post-secondary applications, another really helpful part of it. It goes over college finances and scholarship matching, giving a sense of what a student may qualify for a new school. And all pages have an option for Google Translate into different languages, which although it's not perfect, is an important aspect with all the languages that are spoken in our district. That was the, that was the full purpose of the meeting. And again, I do encourage everyone to take a look at that platform if you get a chance. It's really wonderful. So we look forward to hearing how it rolls out. How the meeting was at your, at 9:27?
Thank you. Okay, Finance Committee.
Sure. So the Finance Committee meeting was held on September 27th. Meeting was held order at 5:00 p.m. and there were no public comments. Several items were discussed. The first one was the audit presentation. Sheridan Jorgensen, who's a partner with Elder Casella and Company, highlighted the August audit for 2020, 2021. And she noted the audit went very well, resulting in unmodified and unmodified plan. All testing on the financial statements were free from material statements, which was very important. She also noted that all entries were provided by the district with no issues on the process and no weaknesses in internal controls. There was no management letter and no significant inquiries either. The final audit cannot be released until guidance on possible additional testing of federal funds is received. And the next steps are to sign off on a draft form and adopt the audit at the October board meeting if the information on additional federal testing is received by October 4th. If this guidance is not received, the audit acceptance will be tabled and an extension of time will be filed. Assistant Superintendent for Business Mary Kulu is going to discuss the audit, I believe, later at this meeting.
And it will be tabled if you don't have, I'm scared, so that it will be tabled until the next one.
Thank you. We also discussed the insurance renewal. The sub-insurance program had another great year with claims under premiums. We're going to have no premium increase and will, all staff and the Board of Education will enjoy a premium holiday in December. The Insurance Committee has received quotes from Cigna and Aetna, which have both come in lower than the current insurer who crossed the shield. Aetna and Cigna are going to give a presentation to the Insurance Committee later in August. We will also have a two-year rate guarantee for dental, HMO, and multi-year rate guarantee for life and long-term disability. The next agenda, next item on the agenda was joint purchasing co-op Maine South furniture. The district belongs to several joint purchasing opportunities, which allows to take advantage of purchasing furniture and discounted group rate. Maine South has tested a variety of furniture and is going to purchase desks and chairs for eight classrooms from two different companies. The first is Frank Clooney in the amount of $72,658.20 and the second is Lower McDonald, McDonald, in the amount of $43,796.16. Finally, the last item discussed was the property tax agenda. This line states retiring after 35 years, which results in new growth maybe of $70 million and 1.7 million in new money to the district. The district's going to have to increase its, this year's levy by $70 million to capture the new growth. A public act was passed, Public Act 102-0519. County Clerk will place a recapture levy on each year's property tax levy, which allows the district to access refunds made out in a 12-year period. So I'm going to pass the information on how it will be implemented is still on the line. And the meeting was adjourned at 5:35.
And then buildings and grounds, Mary, you're going to, since board member Collins is on Google.
Sure. The building, the draft committee meeting was held on September 20th.
Carrie, did you do it? Okay.
She is, thanks, Carrie. It's just, I think it's the sound. She is. Thanks, Terry. It's just, I think it's the sound, the audio was better.
The meeting was called Order at 5:36 p.m. Members present were Member Collins, Member Coyle, and Member Kilburg. There were no public comments. The first item was the construction budget phasing update. We are getting ready to go after bid packages three and four. We have estimates on them that will be about $7.4 million for each of those two bid packages. We anticipate having about $4 million from unspent allowance and contingencies to put towards the budget. We're going to put about $4.4 millions of Esser funds, which one of the major items for Esser funds is indoor air quality improvement, of which we are doing millions and millions and millions of dollars of. The bottom line is, at this point, our estimate for total construction is just over about $500,000, but we have about $15 million in allowance and contingency. So, until we open all of the bids and go through our allowance and contingency in the next couple of years, we won't know how we finally stand in terms of the budget. We also then talked about those items that we put on the wait-and-see list to make sure that we are under budgeted and how probably about a year from now, we'd come to the board, see where we stand budget-wise, and start to implement some of those items. The next item was the monthly construction update, consisted of photos from the schools. A lot of the photos show the newly renovated spaces that were turned over for the start of school. Construction continues at a more minimal level as we finish the girls' locker rooms at Main East, as we finish up some hallway work at Main South, and then as we are still going full-fledged on the center core of Main West, the lower level of which is expected to be turned over for the second semester. The committee meeting was adjourned at 6:27 p.m.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, and our acknowledgement of our outstanding principals, we forgot to mention that this was all in the midst of a January 52th. So, all in that context too, and again, always we thank our team and Mary for all your great work at the meeting. And with everything with construction, Mary, still, please have high voices.
Sure. And your board packet is the August financial report. If you look on the revenue side, you go, whoo, what's going on when you look at the previous years, and that's because property tax bills are due October 1st. So, that's the big difference property taxes makes. On the expenditure side, there really is no rate variation between previous years. As you look at each individual fund, they're still well within budget, and they are really tracking either at or below where they have been in previous years. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the August financial report.
Questions? Okay, instructional services, Sean.
So, first up is a report on our journey in mathematics. So, as you know, a few years ago, we moved to an integrated math program here in the district. And the two individuals can let that change, Melissa Dudich and Jen Leica, who are both Assistant Principals for Teaching and Learning, Melissa at South and Jen at West, who also lead our Math MCC, which oversees mathematics and mathematics curriculum in the district. So, with that, they're going to make a presentation. I'll give you the controls. Take it away.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, we're excited to share with you our journey in mathematics towards access, equity, and empowerment for all of our students. And as Sean had mentioned, Jen and I co-lead the Mathematics MCC in the district. We work very closely with our three department chairs, Don Bodden, Mike Smith, and Jill Sweetwood at each of the three buildings. And what's unique about our role as Mathematics MCC leaders is that we really have to step aside from our roles just in our individual buildings and look at all of our students in the district and make sure that we're doing what's best for all of our students. So, that's really the lens that we bring to all of those meetings with, with our team. You all know that our buildings and our students are wonderfully unique across the district, and so that's the lens that we're bringing to each of these meetings. So, when this journey started back in 2017, we came together as an MCC and talked about what we wanted students' mathematical experiences to be. And we wanted that to be a balance of conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, application and reasoning, all centered around our students leaving us with positive dispositions around the subject of mathematics, so that they could then go out and be college, career, and real-world ready. And those were the conversations that we were having, the vision that we were creating. And this vision was very much guided by a lot of educational research and by our national organizations in mathematics. So, once we had established that this is really what we desired for our students, and we weren't necessarily quite reaching it in the curriculum instruction and assessment practices that we currently had in place, this was kind of the start to our journey. I know some of this is small, but that conversation really kicked off a year of exploration in 2017, 2018. We visited local schools. We reviewed different curriculum resources. And by the end of that 2017-18 school year, we decided that integrated mathematics was the direction that we wanted to go. So, the following year in 2018 and 2019 was all about preparation. There was a lot of adult learning that took place. Even our teachers that we knew, it might be a few years out before they really got involved based on the way we were going to progress with this. We got them all involved in that adult learning piece so that they would be ready for it and so that they could start implementing some of those strategies even in the classes they were teaching then. We established the curriculum and assessment resources that we were going to use. And then in 2019, in the fall, we were really excited to launch our Math 1 course. We continued with a lot of adult learning throughout that process, and I won't say all the small parts of this slide because a lot of it is the same. A lot of adult learning based on instructional coaching, a lot of PLT work. We continue to do classroom walkthroughs to see what's happening in our classrooms, and we keep implementing, you know, one more year of the process with a new course. At the end of 2019, 2020, we did have to experience a pandemic, which was a little bit more difficult. But we ended the year, we were ready to begin again in 2020, 2021. We launched Math 2. This year has been kind of like launching Math 2 again because it was such a different experience for our students and for our teachers last year. But we're staying the course. We're really excited about the work that's happening. And I'll share with you a little bit later some of the really positive feedback that we've gotten from some of our teachers, which I will say, like, remember that this was also in a pandemic, really hard to do, what I'm going to share later, task-based learning over Zoom. And so, it's been really exciting to see the positive reception that has come from some of our teachers throughout this. So, Math 2 last year, this year, we have two courses, Math 3 and Math 3 Compression. Jen's going to talk a little bit about how that split happens. And then next year, we'll be launching pre-calculus and pre-calculus compression, and also a data science course so that we have another option that's not, not quite so calculus-based. And then we're just going to keep continually improving this because we're not going to get it right the first time, but we've got a really good vision and a lot of great things happening. And all of this is kind of setting us up for this future of competency-based education in District 207. And so, as we've gone through this entire process, we've kind of had that in the back of our mind, like, are we setting ourselves up for a competency model once we get more of the district there alongside of us? And so, three pillars for that are the curriculum, which is now integrated and standards-based, the instruction that is task-based and student-centered, and the assessment practices that we are still developing and changing, but they're based on using proficiency scales that are aligned to standards. So, these are kind of the three pillars that we are making all of our changes on, and I'll talk a little bit more about each of those. I wanted to share this quote, which comes from Catalyzing Change, which is a publication from our national organization. Each and every student should learn the essential concepts in order to expand professional opportunities, understand and critique the world, and experience the joy, wonder, and beauty of mathematics. And this publication came out about eight or nine months after we had kind of started this journey. And so, when we saw this, we were like, yes, this is exactly what we're trying to do for our students. And the essential concepts was essentially them taking the common core, which was supposed to streamline things, but in high school did not necessarily do a great job of that. So, it was really to help prioritize and provide more focus to the standards. And that's similar to what we have done. We have really focused our curriculum and assessment on big ideas. And so, the big ideas that you see in that light bulb graphic on the right, those are the competencies that we're using. And so, as students progress through Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3, they continually see those big ideas throughout the curriculum. So, rather than seeing mathematics as this ladder of skills that you're climbing, it's seen as more of an interconnected web of big ideas. And then you can see on the left there, that's how we do our grading practices, which is through these proficiency indicators. And so, when we grade students, we've got these tests that have kind of groupings of problems, all focused on a particular standard or, or big idea. And then there's proficiency indicators that you'll see common throughout the school year. And by showing many, several of those proficiency indicators, that's how you demonstrate that you've achieved mastery. But with curriculum and assessment, we know that the ways in which students actually experience mathematics have a significant impact on the way in which they identify themselves as doers of mathematics. And that is what we want for our students. We want them to identify as doers of mathematics, not just passive learners of mathematics. And so, one of the ways that we've done that is through task-based instruction. So, when students are learning new concepts, it's introduced through a task that is either connected to some type of real-world context, or it might be just problem-solving and, you know, interesting, intrinsically interesting, kind of that joy, wonder, and beauty of mathematics. And these tasks are tasks that promote problem-solving and reasoning. In many cases, they use and connect multiple representations. And the idea is that students build procedural fluency through first having conceptual understanding. And that picture on this slide was a class that I was in just a couple of weeks ago where students were working together, and there's actually four boxes on that poster where they were connecting the different representations. So, what does this mean from a graph? What does this mean from, from an equation? And how are these connected? What can each one help me to answer about the problem? So, some of the ways that we've kind of assessed how things are going, one of those things is through classroom walkthroughs. So, the MCC has, in our first year of implementation, right before COVID hit, we visited the schools twice, each school twice, the whole MCC went. We'd go for a period or two and hit up multiple classrooms, and we took some notes on what was happening. And then we started that process again just recently. We went to several classrooms at South, and we have in our schedule to visit the other schools as well. And here's what we're seeing. When we go into classrooms, we are seeing students presenting to their peers a lot, either in small groups or to the entire class. Students are getting very comfortable with that. We're seeing students use multiple representations. So, it's not just I see a problem, they must want an equation for this. It's like, how should I approach this? Would an equation be helpful? Would a table be helpful? Maybe both are helpful, but in different ways. And we're seeing teachers using more advanced questioning and discussion strategies. And that was some of the professional development that we did for teachers, specifically questioning and discussion strategies, because that's so important for the curriculum that we're trying to enact. And then the other thing that we did was, at the end of last year in the spring, we gave our teachers a survey. And I will say, I think this is just really positive data that we got from this survey, especially after a year of pandemic learning and teaching. The teachers who had taught an integrated course, so every teacher took the survey, but some of them had only still been teaching traditional courses because we had only done Math 1 and Math 2. Not every teacher was involved yet. And those who taught an integrated course were much more likely to say that they use tasks in their classrooms that have multiple entry points for students, so there's not just one way to solve it. Those teachers were more likely to believe that discourse in which students together are co-constructing knowledge really should be at the center of mathematics learning. They were more likely to use tasks that engage students in high-level thinking that necessitates conceptual understanding as opposed to very skills procedural-based understandings. And they also identified that they were more likely to choose tasks that allow students to experience the joy, wonder, and beauty of mathematics. So, we got some really positive feedback from the teachers. I'm going to turn it over to Jen now, and she's going to explain a little bit more about some of the work that we've been doing.
So, before we move on to this, I just want to share, Melissa described, we're seeing it in our classrooms. We've heard it from our teachers, and I want to say too that we're hearing it from our kids. Just last Friday, I was at our football game, and I was chatting with some of our freshman football players after the game. We had a lively conversation of a lot of things, one of which included, what are some things that are happening in your classrooms that you're really enjoying? And students said, we really like talking to one another. We like partner work and group work. We like it when we get to talk. So, well, tell me more. Where are you, where are you doing that at? And one of the students said, well, we've been doing it pretty much every day in math. And externally to them, I was like, that's great. Inside, yes. What we think going for, and those are the shifts we're looking for, and we're really excited about that. So, there's a lot to celebrate there. And in addition to all of the wonderful task-based instruction that Melissa was describing, we want to make sure that all of our kids have access to that. So, that leads us to the next change, which was establishing a common pathway for our students in their first two years. So, essentially, as our students come in, depending on their middle school experience, they may come in at Math 1 or Math 2, and a very small group of our students might come in at Math 3. But we've ensured that in that Math 1 and Math 2 experience, they're getting that same experience, no matter what their past mathematical experiences were, which is really important because we sincerely believe that all of our students benefit from task-based instruction and can achieve in a rigorous, standard-based classroom. Also, we have our Math 1, we have our Math 2 alongside construction if our students choose to engage in it in that way. And then, as Melissa described in the beginning timeline, this is where our paths kind of open up some opportunities based on what our students want to explore in the future. So, they can move on into Math 3 and possibly take that alongside with machining. Or if they decide they really want to make sure that they get to AP Calc BC, they can engage in Math 3 Compression, which is the same as the Math 3 course, it just compresses some additional topics to ensure that they're prepared for that AP Calc BC class. But what you'll see here with this common pathway is that all of our students, if they'd like to get there, have an opportunity to get to AP Calc in some way. They also, these are just two pathways, some of our most common ones used, but we have students who can take obviously AP Statistics and AP Computer Science, Data Science, a plethora of dual-credit electives and things like that. We just wanted to highlight that common pathway in their first two years. In addition to that change, we've recognized that while we believe all of our students will be successful in this learning experience, we might have some students who may need an extra scoop of support in their Math 1 or their Math 2 class. So, we came up with a Foundations of Problem-Solving course that students engage in alongside of their Math 1 and their Math 2 class, where they get that extra scoop of support in the frame of previewing, practicing, and revisiting. And the goal here was not just to support our students in their skill development, but also to really grow their identity as mathematical learners. A lot of our students who are engaged in our FPS classes, as we call them, they typically find themselves as, math isn't my thing. I haven't been good at math. And our goal is to address that mindset alongside their skill development. And what's really exciting is our students, when we ask them about their FPS experiences, said that that's what's happening for them. So, for example, we do a lot of previewing in our FPS classes so that before our students get to their Math 1 or their Math 2 class, they get a chance to see what that lesson might be about. So, now our students, possibly for the first time in their math careers, are sitting in their Math 1 or Math 2 class and going, oh, wait, I know that. Yeah, I've got the answer. I want to contribute in this small group discussion. And our students are saying that previewing in their FPS class is increasing their confidence in their Math 1 and their Math 2 class. They've also told us that practicing and revisiting concepts that are going on in their Math 1 and Math 2 class is giving them a second or third stab at things that they didn't quite grasp the first time, and they're experiencing that success. So, we're really, really excited about this program, and this again goes alongside Math 1 or Math 2. And just as our students might need an extra scoop of support to engage in this rigorous learning experience, our teachers sometimes need an extra scoop of support as well as they navigate these changes, as they learn, how do we support all of our students' needs in these math classrooms that are integrated, that are rigorous, that are task-based? So, with that being said, we recognize the need for adult support, and we created the differentiation coaching position, which was launched in the 2021 school. which was launched in the 2021 school year. So last school year was the first year where our mathematics differentiation coaches started to engage with our teachers on this work. And this is just some of the things that they've been doing. They've been curating differentiated curricular materials and instructional tasks. So kind of being able to get ahead of the teachers in the planning and say, this is a great task that has low-floor and high-ceiling opportunities for students to enter and students to get both support and enrichment. So they've been able to get kind of upfront in that planning. They are also facilitating adult PD sessions. Actually, tomorrow, in this space, they will be conducting a questioning and discussion workshop for math teachers, where they're going to share different strategies for increasing student voice and mathematical discourse in the classrooms. They are visiting and engaging in teachers' classrooms, going in, providing support, co-teaching, or trying the new strategy alongside of them. And then as all of these things, as Melissa pointed out, this was launched in the middle of a pandemic. So the needs last year are starting to shift as we're now back in person and our teachers' needs and student needs this year. So we're continuing to evolve this position to make sure that it is meeting the needs of our teachers so that they can meet the needs of our students.
One thing I would quickly add related to that concept of Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3. One of the benefits of having done this during the pandemic is that because all the concepts spiral back every single year, if I miss something in Algebra 1 and I'm going on to Geometry, I'm not lost in Algebra 1 for a year, year and a half before I get it back. I'm going to walk right back into that the very next year. And what this enabled our staff to do was say, well, we know we only got this far because of the pandemic. We can start there, which would never have happened in a normal sequence of math that you see in my spaces.
That's a great point, Sean. Thanks for hearing that. To talk about assessing impact, just like Melissa did for our task-based instruction, assessing impact of this common pathway for our students is really exciting. So this slide speaks about our incoming freshmen, our ninth-grade students enrolled in a general education mathematics course that we would consider a rigorous college prep math course. In 1819, before Math 1 launched, 90% of our incoming freshmen were enrolled in a general education class that we would consider rigorous in college prep. In 1920, when Math 1 launched, 100% of our students enrolled in a general education math class for what we would consider rigorous college prep.
This is exclusively for our main township.
This is main township, yes. And this is students enrolled in a general education mathematics class. So along those same lines, our ninth-grade students enrolled in a general education mathematics class. In 1819, before Math 1 was launched, we had 83% of those incoming freshmen enrolled in those courses, earning credit. That shifted up to 95%. So those are some big gains, especially when we consider exposing our students to what we know that they can be successful in and providing them the supports that they need to get there. Along similar lines, for our 10th-grade students enrolled in general education mathematics course that we would consider a rigorous college prep math course, before Math 2 launched, we were at 93%, and after Math 2 launched, we were at 100%. And of those earning credit, before Math 2 launched, we were at 90%, and we moved up to 94% earning credit in what we would consider a rigorous college prep math course. So we're pretty excited about that. And Math 3 is just around the corner. So we're hoping to continue to see some positive trends. Speaking of, what's next? This year, we've got Math 3 and Math 3 compression. So as this year closes, we'll be able to assess impact in a similar way. Pre-Calc and Pre-Calc compression are launching next year alongside our Data Science class, as Melissa spoke about in the timeline. And then our focus will continue to be, as it has always been, equitable instruction for all of our students and preparing them for and getting them excited for whatever it is that their future holds and how math can serve them in their future goals. And that's it.
So we wanted Jen, Melissa, just to update the board. This, and I don't think this is an overstatement. You are seeing what I think is one of the most well-executed transformational changes in a really complex area of math. As a former high school principal, I can tell you that next to Jen and Shirley in my halls, the calls you get frequently are about mathematics. And the fact that the data supports the work when Melissa started helping lead the Math MCC and then Jen joined us a few years ago, right away, and Melissa had the background in this shift to integrated mathematics. You know, there's the old classroom saying, we remember 10% of what we hear, 25% of what we see in here, but 95% of what we do. So when you hear these things about students constructing and co-constraining their own knowledge, it's a better way to learn. And there's neuroscience behind that. When you, the work that you've done here is nothing short of amazing. And I mean that sincerely. In the history of this district, there have been very few moments, people have talked about, well, we're doing the good work. We're doing the good work. We're doing the work. This is more than saying we're doing the work. This is measurably doing the good work. The other thing that this illustrates, in my estimation, is how the work needs to be done to be successful and sustainable. So the elements that we add in here, the levels of coaching, the levels of adult learning that are unprecedented. A lot of districts try to do this, and they cannot match the success because they haven't got the designs of how to support their teachers in their own learning journey. It's not just the kids that are learning in this. The teachers are learning a new way to do it. And they're a little bit harder sometimes to teach than kids are. So this design of the adult learning with the leadership of Melissa and Jen has just been nothing short of remarkable. So we wanted the board to get, and the beauty is, the kids are doing better than ever, and they feel better about themselves as mathematicians than ever. And that is pretty rare. So.
You know, I just, I remember you coming to speak.
I did too.
And I remember thinking, wow, they want to get kids excited about math. I grew up in a time where you were not excited about math. And it's just really gratifying, I think, I'm speaking for the board, to see this presentation, because it doesn't seem that long ago that you were here going, this is what we want to do. And now you've done it, and you've got feedback, and you've got results, and, you know, measurable success. And it's really exciting. So thank you so much.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Quickly, I just want to echo member Carla said, thank you for the wonderful presentation, very important. And as we all know, the mathematics is really one of the most critically important in our education system that I agree. And when we were in the school, learning mathematics too, when once you lost, then it has been quite a challenge. It has been difficult to come back and lost their interest totally and so on. And I am grateful that the teachers are really contributing, your access, your time, and to bring this to upgrades for our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa and Jen, so much. I wish you guys had been my math teachers. I might be better at math if you were. But I did have one quick question for you. I loved what you said about that you're looking to help students be real-world ready. Is there something in regards to the task-based, like an integrative tax class? I hear from so many friends my age, and they're like, I wish I would have learned how to do taxes when I was in high school in my math class. So I just thought maybe an idea like that gives students a real-world application, you know, a student that might not be necessarily interested in going into accounting or banking or whatnot, but still something that you are going to have to deal with in your adult life.
And I think there's some of that that happens through some of our content. We talk about exponential functions and loans and how all of those things work. And then a little bit of that happens in the CTE department through some of their financial literacy classes as well.
It will be part of the financial literacy curriculum, which 100% of our students will get. So they'll get a little bit more deep, more deep into the concepts of loans and compounding interest and things like that than we used to. Because a real foundation of that class is to how to actually accrue wealth and build wealth, not just stay, in addition to stay out of debt. So there will be a lot more math actually incorporated in financial literacy than we had in the consumer economics course. We're very excited about that.
And a couple just observations and questions. Melissa and Jen, thank you so much. That PowerPoint, I realized we didn't turn around two of our board members. I don't know if they can see it. Can we, can we distribute that PowerPoint to the board?
Thank you so much. That was what I was raising my hand to ask.
We should have turned around. Yes, we should have thought of that. I apologize.
Sorry about that.
So we'll send it out. There's some great language and stats that I want to refer to, and I'm sure other board members too, so outstanding work.
It's a great presentation.
It's a great presentation with great. I was a business undergrad, and I want to go back to high school and take these classes. It is very, oh. So great. And you know what? And it's also exciting to talk about substantive educational principles with the pandemic, just a parenthetical reference. And it is so exciting to see the vibrancy of that again. So thank you just for bringing that as well.
You lost the board members?
We lost them. Did you just hang them up?
Well, they're done.
Were you able to showcase this to a community base also, to like, to the parents, kind of update it? Just give them a source of information? I think your parents will be grateful. They appreciate it as well.
We have some, yeah.
We can link that.
Anything information that you can provide. Nothing more detailed, but at least our district is doing this related to math work. I think your parents will be appreciative.
Jen, right, because change is hard for people and a lot of parents. Like, because I was a parent of an incoming freshman last year. I'm like, whoa, what is this? What's number four? What's a three? What's a two? Oh my God, what's a zero? Like, but I'm just saying, to have it so well-explained by you is so beneficial. You know, just like parents saying, help me understand, you know? And that is really useful.
We had a video a few years ago. Might be good to maybe update this with just sort of a German video.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Move on to our summer school update, Sean.
Yeah, so in your packet, you have the summer school report for summer 2021. It outlines, the memo there outlines some of the specifics of what this summer looked like, some of the remediation that we would provide as well throughout the summer using CARES Act funding. So if you have any questions related to that, I'd be happy to answer.
I guess I have one question. So, you know, summer school for the past few years has been virtual. Do you, what do you foresee in the future? Kind of kind of virtual, some, we're going all that way.
Yes. So what we've decided for next summer is that any of the courses that are remediating any learning loss that occurred during this school year will be in person. We just found that the need to be hands-on in the class with the students is just a better model for that. Yet we'll maintain our online model for the rest of the students. And even when we do that, we do have opportunities where teachers can say, hey, why don't you come in for a day and work with me individually? So we try to keep it really flexible. But the online model has worked really, really well over the last two years and super flexible for families too.
Sure, especially students who don't have transportation, right? If there's transportation issues, they still have the option.
Construction as well, right? We have one more right there. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. National Merit Scholarship.
Yep, so the next one, the National Merit Scholarship. We bring this up every year. What we have are the nationally commended students and then those that are, have qualified for as semifinalists. So those students are listed there. I think Mr. Clark has already put out, or will be putting out, an announcement to the press related to those students as well.
Okay, four-year request.
Three this month, all have been processed or reviewed.
New course proposal.
So in your packet is a new course proposal for adoption. This is exploring the teaching profession. I talked about this a little bit at Ed Committee. This course will be one that's built into a teaching pathway that we're creating as a sub-pathway within our Health and Human Services. So students who are interested in being teachers, we're going to be partnering with St. Francis University, whose MOU is later in tonight's agenda, to offer this dual-credit course. It is a college-level course where students can earn three credits. But it's also very much centered upon learning about what the real day-to-day of being a teacher is in addition to doing observations and internships. So those internships will be built with our partner district, 62, 63, 64, to give students some experience, really real-world, hands-on experience. We're excited about this course and this pathway, because again, it'll be one that solidifies or refutes that this is a career choice that students want to make.
And this is only first reading, so we'll have time. We'll vote on it at the next meeting. So if you have questions in between, you can reach out to Sean or give a quick one now.
Just a quick one now. I know the teaching profession, also our community university, four-year community university in Chicago, for example, like Northeastern, you know, university, it's very high, popularly actively involved with the being a teacher, teaching profession. So I see that one of the universities, same area that you're talking about, has the ability of maybe reaching out to such local.
It would reach out to everybody. It would reach out to everybody and anybody.
Any university who may be interested, they can reach out.
We've had communication with Northeastern. There is a bigger problem we don't really need to get into tonight, which is has to do with the Community College Board and what they accept and what they don't at the Higher Ed Commission. And so that's been a sticking point with Northeastern in particular. But we continue, again, we take all the comers that makes sense for us and our students.
Great. Thank you. Be sure to review that. If you have any other questions, let Sean know before the November meeting. Do I have a motion, moving on to agenda items or action items? Do I have a motion on a consent agenda, A, item 8, A through F? Second. Collins?
Terry?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yes.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Besler?
Aye.
I'm just going to keep an eye on you two when we vote. Okay, do I have a motion on number nine, textbook second reading? So moved.
Second.
These are the novels that were presented in our last meeting. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions? I think we covered these last time. Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Besler?
Aye.
Okay, as we discussed earlier, number 10 is going to be tailored for our next November meeting, as we lay out federal guidelines. Moving on to number 11, do I have a motion on 2022 health insurance renewal? So moved.
Second.
Mary? No premium increase and a premium holiday in December. I don't think it gets better than that.
How many years is that?
Three in a row.
That's pretty amazing.
It is statistically and actuarially unheard of. We'll take it.
Well, that's three in a row, and it's like four out of five, isn't it?
I can't recall.
I've got, it's pretty unprecedented. Okay.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Besler?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to 12, approval of bids and award of contracts. Nope, I'm going to say it. 12A is going to be referred back to committee. And we'll move on to, we have a motion for 12B and C. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
We already got one. Thank you though.
So as part of our classroom furniture replacement, South was ready for eight additional classrooms of furniture, their individual student desks. We're hoping if we order them now, they will arrive in tenth or second semester.
And I did B and C together.
Yes. Yes. So it's the same, some has, it's, it's, one provider has a rectangular student desk and the chairs. The other provider has the triangle student desk. The difference between the shapes is the configurations that you can make with them as students collaborate.
Any questions? Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion on 12D, Thompson Road Route is clear through your contract? Go move.
So moved.
George?
So we are currently under contract with Clear. Through a committee, we reviewed our residency process. We actually reached out to the company to do a demonstration for the purpose of just informing everyone about the product. We actually used a real case on this and it actually showed us some features that we do not have. Part of it is the Clear ID Confirm Badge and the license plate recognition. We feel like those two products will help us be even more efficient with residency.
And it continues to be a problem. It's always going to be a problem because of where we're located.
And this should reduce manpower or go now.
Well, that's the idea, you know?
Kinda. You know, it's more complicated than that because what it does is it makes each investigation more effective and gives us better tools to prove the case. It's still complex. It just gives us better data.
Do we have any this year that we found?
Oh, yeah. We always do.
That are not, they're in districts?
Always.
Or they're going to our schools, but they don't actually have a residence?
Or they try to. Every year.
So I understand that this is very critically important to have in such, especially for verifying the legal residences of the students. And we did have some issues and so on that previously too, we made it too. But I'm just kind of thinking, their charge is like a monthly charge, about $2,000 or so every month for year one, year two, and three. But normally, isn't this like kind of like a one-time deal in a way? When our school starts, all the students comes in, register, then they get, this company can check, verify it and so on. And then pretty much it's done, not here on?
No, not even close. Not even close. We have cases, Jen, that pop up all the time. People slip through and get in, and then you find out like this, it's all the time.
You're wrong.
In fact, we don't know sometimes, it's both a problem, the complexity of how people, the levels that people go to circumvent the... We have one case right now that we're working on where a family owes us $150,000, one case. And that you can run as a case study, helps us sort of understand how people can circumvent. And it's, if anything, I'm worried we're not catching enough of it. So it isn't one day, it isn't at the beginning of the year, it's all the time. Because people can get through and be here for eight months, and then all of a sudden, something happens and you discover they're not a resident. We had a family that was here for four years, actually had a kid go through, second kid. So they were here for five or six years before anyone discovered. And that was a tip from a neighbor. So there's no, what this will do initially is we have a, it sets a threshold. We're going to be able to set the threshold a little higher. So it's probably going to kick some people out initially and raise the bar. We've also learned some pieces of ID that are better than others to ask for. So it's a whole combination. And we continue to learn and maybe try to step one step ahead of some of the strategies to beat the system.
A year-long necessary expense, so, is the way I describe it. Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on approval of intergovernmental agreements and minimum of understandings, items 13A through C?
Go move.
So the three items we have, the first is something we've been doing with Oakton now for probably six or seven years, which is a longitudinal data sharing agreement. So this is a renewal of that for the next three years. And then the other two are dual-credit enrollment MOUs, which are necessary anytime you enter into a dual-credit relationship with the university. So Oakton's is a renewal and St. Francis is a first time. entertain any good questions now.
Great, and we're adding another school. That's great. Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins? Thumbs up?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion on number 14, new club proposal? Main South Pickball Club, the sport of the future, present in the future.
Do I have a second?
Pickleball is the sport. I tell you, you can't stop here about it. Anything more, Ben? Say add to that. Okay. Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for 15 to approve most calendars for the 2022, 2023, and 23, 24 school years, as presented? Any support? Sorry. So move.
They're presenting those two calendars. Next year is almost identical to this year. The following year just has a little bit of a shift around the winter break just to where the start of the year and the, and Christmas holiday falls. And that happens every year, I think, about five to six years where we have a little shift. But pretty standard, nothing in here, eight different.
One question I got, because I'm just not aware that our partner schools, our grammar school districts, are they pretty aligned with us? Or is there still?
We do align the breaks. So I actually collaborate with all three, all four districts, yeah, four, sorry, districts to make sure that the breaks are.
Any other questions? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Number 16 is just informational calendar items. Please note A that, the additions and changes. The one question I have is, are, were we going to do a November 15 special board meeting on phases three and four?
P3 will be approved on the special board meeting on November 15.
Okay, so that should be added up.
And that will be in place of finance and buildings and grounds?
Correct. It's on the evening, that's the standing committee date.
That was November 15th, right?
Yes, yes.
Whatever the board would like.
What day of the week is that? A Monday?
The Monday.
What time is the regular standard use?
Five.
Five. We'll just leave it at the regular.
Thank you.
Okay, any additions? Okay, any other public comments? No other public comments? Do I have a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiating matters, and security procedures, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to actual, if threatened or unreasonable, potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public party? Go move.
Aye.